Do you want me to kick it off? Okay. So, welcome everybody, thanks for coming. So, this is the enrollment committee meeting. And really, the goal here is we think about these committee meetings, or at least is we'd like to think about them moving forward, the finance committee, enrollment committee. It's really an area where we can put all our cards on the table, have a conversation. And so, the brief items that we've set up here are structured for that reason, so that we can have a conversation and sort through some of the information. So, we do have kind of a tentative agenda here, and so we'll go over that just quickly. And then, I do have just three main goals for the meeting that I would think there's no reason that we can't get through and have an understanding at the end. So, three-part agenda, we'll start by looking at current year enrollment, and also we'll look at last year's final enrollment, just briefly too, that's just a base of understanding. A key enrollment date always is October 1st, so obviously, that date has come and gone, so we'll look at where we were on October 1st, where we were right before Christmas break, and then sort of project out a net of your projection for the current year. So, we'll do that, and then we'll spend the bulk of our time looking at next year's enrollment projections. We'll look at our current levels, which as we know, we built the budget on 2,240 students for next year. We'll talk about the application deadline for open enrollment that's coming up here in the middle of this month, and then look at other scenarios and options as well. And then, finish by talking just briefly about open enrollment windows, obviously, the importance of that January 15th deadline, and then the impact of building a budget to making sure that we make our enrollment target, whatever that might be. Three-part goal here, so as we look at the agenda and the items in front of us here, hopefully, at the end, we'll have an understanding of that January 15th deadline, and the importance of that January 15th deadline for open enrollment for next year, understanding of the open enrollment application trends, and our current situation as it relates to open enrollment, and then, understanding of enrollment target, and what that means in terms of our budget, and understanding the importance of being at or slightly above that enrollment target, and sort of ending that trend of being below our enrollment target, as difficult as it can be from year to year. Is that doable in an hour and 15 minutes?
First of all, I want to remind you that we don't make decisions at these meetings. It's not a board meeting where we can make motions, or actions, or have any sort of decisions be made, that it's information gathering, and opportunity for administration and board members to have a good conversation. So, I want to echo what you said, but I'll sort of remind you that we can't make any decisions as part of this meeting. The other piece I want to make sure we circle back to is the reason we switched and made this enrollment committee was to talk about the philosophies of open enrollment. These are very important decisions that the board needs to make, this information's very helpful. But, part of the reason for the switch in the committee, my understanding, was that the board had wanted to have a deeper conversation about the future of open enrollment, future numbers, class sizes, building capacities, because we keep getting hung up there during board meetings, and so, the purpose of the group was to have some of that conversation and come away with a philosophy to take to the board for deeper discussion. So, I see that's on tonight's agenda, I think this is going to help us as we move towards that, so I'm hoping that will come out more in the next agendas to go forward. But, this is very important data information for us to be able to have that conversation next time, or sometime in the future. Just to be clear, that was my understanding, if other board members have the same or different, it needs to be a good time to share that.
Thanks for the reminder. Decision-making bodies, and I know sometimes there's some confusion there, so that always helps.
If I'm not, I can agree, it's just my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely, no, that's well-stated. So, the spreadsheet you have in front of you, a lot of information here, I try not to spreadsheet people to death, but it happens that way all too often. So, in the top-left corner, you'll see our enrollment for last year. So, this is all, but final at this point, our enrollment for last year, for last year in total, we had 3,235 students, K through 12, and we were a 74% resident. So, as we look over the last five or six years, we've been trending towards slightly higher percentages of resident students, in terms of our total, which is a nice trend to see. So, that was last year, 3,235 students. This year, as of October 1st, that critical October 1st count, we were at 3,246. You'll recall 3,240 as a key figure, so as you remember, at the last board meeting on December 14th, we built the revised budget on 3,240 students. Obviously, we're slightly above that figure here at 3,246, so that's kind of the reason for the numbers there. And you can see as of the most recent count here, at the end of December, we've increased slightly since October, 3,248, so just an increase of two students over the October 1st count. And, because I'm sort of the new guy here, in talking with Laura and Mark and some other administrators, in depending on the district, you really want to be careful on building your budget off of that October or December count, because in some districts, you lose quite a few kids in the second semester. I looked at the history and in talking with some of the other staff members, we don't see that trend here, so we feel that that 3,240, or 3,248 as of the end of December is a pretty reliable figure to build a budget on for next year. Okay? Looking at the bottom-left corner, I tried to fold in our open enrollment applications. So, these are open enrollment applications as of yesterday, January 3rd, so obviously, 12 days left in the open enrollment application window. We have, as of January 3rd, received 186, everybody see that figure on there, open enrollment applications for enrollment for next year. Out of those 186, 79 of them, or just about 80 of them are in kindergarten or first grade, as you would expect, that's highest applications in kindergarten and first grade, leaving just over 100 applications in second through 12th grade.
Can we back up for a second?
Yes.
This handout that we got at the board meeting has our 2017 October 1st enrollment at 3,217. And now, we're at 3,246, so where'd all those extra kids come from?
Yeah, that 3,217 is not a number.
Mark, you gave this to us at a board meeting.
Yeah, I'm looking at, it's the history, right?
Yeah.
It's in history.
Yeah, so if you told us recently at a board meeting we're at 3,217, which was kind of a panic about enrollment, that we shouldn't be as panicked as we thought, is what you're saying though, is that correct? In terms of being on target for budget?
Yeah, the numbers that I have on the sheet were fully submitted to the state in December, but...
Okay, so this number here is wrong?
Why, I don't...
When you do our submissions, and when you do them periodically, and the last submission for the first... Right, right, I'm just saying, they're getting numbers from the state in December, they...
No, I'm looking at his October, October 1st on his chart is 3,246, October 1st on my chart for Dr. Larson is 3,217, I'm trying to understand the difference, if it's an increase in enrollment, or if it's...
I wonder if passages, if that could play a role?
Transitions?
Yeah, the transitions program, 18 students there, but we're 23 different, that could account for 18 to 23.
But, this is the number we have enrolled that means our budget of what we've, we're not at 32, so it's...
And that might be K-12, move on maybe?
He said I'm at K-12, so this includes ECSE and transitions, and this does not.
And I took out the PSL.
You took out PSL, okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, the one of yours includes transitions and what else? Did you say ECSE?
ECS.
Oh, thank you.
Really tried to be special, all exactly.
Yes, thank you, I misheard that.
Good question.
There's just so many.
Lot of numbers, yeah. And so, really what we tried to show here, it's difficult sometimes, because you think, okay, we have 186 open enrollment applications, 80 of which are kindergarten and first grade, leaving 100 open enrollment applications in second through 12th grade roughly. And so, what I did is, in the enrollment as of December 2017, that's just, I took the top right of your spreadsheet and brought it down to the bottom-left. And then, the projected enrollment for 1819 is just simply taking, for example, first grade. You see in the middle column, that enrollment, December 2017, under first grade, you see 187, so right now, we have 187 first graders. And we have six open enrollment applications for second grade. So, I took that 187, added the six, to get 193. Does that make sense? Same thing, you know, 195 current second graders, plus the five that have applied for third grade, would give us 200 third graders. So, certainly, this is oversimplified, what we know to be true is that more than, more likely than not, those 187 first graders, we will not retain all of those 187. We may lose one, two, three, four, unknown number. What we know to be true also is that we will most likely have move-ins, right? And so, it's a long way of saying, I'm not accounting for any attrition, and I don't account for any move-ins, I'm just assuming that's going to be washed in and out.
I'm confused, I'm a little confused, sorry. Because it's 100, 180 to 180, so kindergarten, first grader, straight over from December 17.
And the rest are too.
Okay.
The rest are.
Okay.
And so...
I see you added the six in, I'm not sure where I see it, added the six in.
Six, two, seven, eight.
Oh, you moved a number? That doesn't work, because 195 plus six would be 200.
195 plus five. 195 plus five.
Next year?
I know.
Except on the 22 plus 182, would be more than 187.
Sorry, I'm confused, it's not consistent.
Oh, so, I was going to come back to second and first grade, I can't, or excuse me, kindergarten and first grade. With the exception of kindergarten and first grade, I added everything straight, straight up, okay?
Because we knew that those...
Exactly, so we have more applications in kindergarten and first grade, so I held those numbers as constants.
Okay.
The same in 1718 as 1819.
It doesn't add up. Oh, they're adding up here, okay.
I think the spot of confusion is that the open enrollment applications are for 1819 enrollment.
Because you're adding it to the 17, and then...
You take the third grade, add the fourth grade apps to get the next year's fourth grade.
Their chart would have reported added this way down, this time they're adding up.
Oh.
The way you presented it, Mark, it's hard to confuse.
Oh, okay.
It's just different, which is fine, it's just someone to make sure they're still... I got it now.
Okay, no, it's, I was confused on the number too. And so, what are we trying to learn from this? With the exception of kindergarten and first grade, if we accepted, and the students attended next year, all of the applications that we have received as of January 3rd, from second through 12th grade, we would increase our enrollment from 3,248 to 3,260. That's what we know to be true as of January 3rd. Everybody track with me? And then, all I did was take in the building enrollment, Wildwood, for example, in 2017, 18, if you added the 182 students that are currently enrolled this year, plus the 187, plus the 195, you get 564 students. So, Wildwood right now has 564 students. Assuming kindergarten and first grade are the same next year, and assuming we accept and they enroll all six of the open enrolled applications in second grade, Wildwood would decrease its student enrollment by two students. If we accepted and they enrolled all of the students in third, fourth, and fifth grade, OH would be down 15 students next year. At the middle school, they would be up 15 students, and at the high school, they would be up 14, and the net of those four buildings is the 12 that you see increased from 3,248 to 3,260.
It doesn't include any move-ins or move-outs.
Exactly, yep, it assumes 100% retention from first grade to second grade, or sixth grade to seventh grade, it also assumes no move-ins, which we're assuming based on history there are.
Right.
It's just tough to quantify that.
Right.
And so, that was really all that I had, just by way of the beginning part, you know, that I'm hoping we can have just kind of a conversation here on where we want to go. We do have enrollment projections on the school board agenda for tonight, and I do want to reference that I talked to the enrollment committee about that, so I'm just hoping for some direction, and then, just a conversation on where we think we would like to be, again, not a decision-making body, but where we think this committee would like to see us next year. I'll just throw out the conversation out there, just by way of parameters. Lucy, I want to be respectful of your comment about a philosophy on enrollment in general down the road. Given our deficit forecast for next year, it would be difficult to budget on a lower student population next year than we have this year. That's just my initial thought, no, again, not a decision-making body, but it would make budgeting difficult, so.
Because we know budgeting with the way the funding formula works, keeping even the same number of students still means we're making pretty major budget cuts, because we're not funded at a high enough rate to keep up with inflation and high tariffs.
Yep, so, we know we're getting 2% new money from the state next year. State aid accounts for about 80% of our general fund revenue total. 2% new money for us is in the neighborhood of $400,000, based on our current student count. If you look at the 10-year average, our costs are going up by 500 or 550,000, that's where that structural imbalance comes in, that 100 or 150,000.
But, it's not as simple as saying if we add enough kids, because then you start to increase class size and have higher expenses possibly, if those classrooms get too big. So, it's not as simple if we add enough kids to make up that difference financially, because it could trigger us to need to add more teachers, which would trigger us needing to add more kids, so it's not a simple formula.
Yeah, you get to a point where, you don't want so many students in a classroom.
Right. So, did you want, I responded to the board members' questions, I lost.
Well, no, I, that was all that I really had planned, I was hoping that we could have a conversation on where we would like to be from an enrollment standpoint, so I can have some sort of framework when we talk to the, when we talk to the board as a whole later on. And again, just to throw it out there, that obviously, we have the January 15th window, and the ultimate goal in my mind would be to get some direction on January 25th, where we will have a recommendation to accept, waitlist, or deny some of those applications, have a conversation about the second through 12th grade students, and how we're going to react to those, given the budget forecast.
With Dr. Larson, the 25th is a study session, so we won't actually have action until February, is that right?
We can have action on, if we want to, we've had action on study session meetings before, we'll have the meeting for that.
But, we historically have.
We have this historically.
Yeah, which I know, we'd have to be pretty clear, I think, with the community, that we would be acting at night, and I think we'd have that public comments, then if we're going to make those actions.
I'll look back, I don't think we've done that in the past, though, because we have done different actions before.
Yeah.
But, we're also not guaranteed that if we accept open enrollment, that that comes, but that's another factor that we need to keep in mind too.
And, do we have a model we're using or considering for move-ins, move-outs? Do you have enrollment, I mean, I agree with your statement that we need to be at the level we currently are, 3,240 or higher, the higher piece, I don't know what that means or looks like, but do we have, we've got a new development in Hugo, what do we know about that? We've got a new development coming in behind Julie's house, there's nine houses going in there, we have a new apartment building coming behind Aldi, so we have a lot of new construct, not a lot, a lot for our district, construction coming, let's put that in context. And so, what do we know from real estate agents and others about the housing market that would help us with this decision also? Would we have that information available to us on the January 25th dates?
We have some of it right now. The first phase of development, bad line landing is nearing completion, however, the lots that are included in the Montmielai school, the supermarket rates for occupancy until the summer of 2018 at the very earliest. We have 25 home sites, including the Montmielai schools in this addition, there are 40 additional lots in the next phases, and timing of the development will be determined by market sales. So, it's 25, that will be at the very earliest summer of 2018, and then 48 additional lots in the next phases.
48 are in Montmielai?
Right now, I buy it every day, so, right now, they have their first model home up, they're on the site not yet, they just have, they just framed it and so forth, and so that's what they're talking about. When I talked to them, they were, at the end of January should be their final marketing plan when they're ready, and then they would start looking at, having people come in, they look at those houses, getting loss. That's why I said the first Montmielai home, there's 25 in the first phase, the area of the first phase, there's 25 that would be considered Montmielai homes. The earliest one could be put up, would be late summer of 2018, by the time they get it going, and then there could possibly be 25. I said, when you're, I asked them, what would be your ideal first phase, they say a year and a half to two years would be first phase, sort of thing, to get those homes in. And then, after that, would be depending on market, and so, for housing market, there'd be 48 additional homes in, in future phases, but that would be after that, first year and a half to two years.
But, according to our open enrollment policy, if they have a contract on the lot, even if it doesn't finish till later, so they could sign a contract in the summer or early fall, and those students are, then enrolled in our district, according to our policy.
Right. So, to go a little further, let's say the house is completed in October, and they're moving from Stillborn, let's say, if they have that documentation that's complete, that says that they have the intent to move and all that, they would start in September, even though they weren't residents until...
Right, right, so people could sign in August, up to 25, for home completion during the next academic year?
Yeah.
And we have no way to predict what that's going to look like?
On that side, it's usually easier to add staff, like that happened with us here in our situation this year, when we had no residents moving in, and then we were able to have smaller class sizes based on adding that staff or something. So, sometimes it helps, you know, to our advantage, okay, that tips the number, say if you get, say, nine or 10 kids coming in, that would be...
Right, and it worked, is there, was there an extra classroom, is that the challenge would be if it happened across the park, then the space?
Yeah, exactly, I mean, they end up with 10, you know, whatever, and they wouldn't have, but it's typically, it doesn't, you know, once in a while, it would happen in one grade level, that happened, I think, in like a third grade classroom for a while ago and stuff, so, but if you can then add a staff and a space, then you can even manage a little better, because you really need about 10 students, is it eight to 10?
Yeah, yeah.
We had the situation, a number of years ago, at OH Anderson, we had move-ins across the grade levels at OH Anderson, and every class just got bigger, and the building got bigger, and our course specialists took, yeah, and we're still trying to bring those numbers down, because it seems to be the houses that they're going to build are four and five bedrooms, which usually means they're coming in with two to four kids maybe, and, you know, they're not really starter homes usually, you know, that's part of OH number of years ago, so we've had bad scenarios, we've had great scenarios.
Yeah, typically.
And there's just no...
And I think we're seeing, sorry, I think we're seeing a little bit of that at OH for next year.
Right.
Right, this analysis assumes accepting, and that every kid in third, fourth, and fifth grade that has applied would be accepted, and even if we did that, we'd be down 15. So, I think you're seeing some of that, you know, fourth and a fifth, and fifth and sixth.
But, it doesn't necessarily mean that the class sizes would be smaller.
Right.
That's the hard part that people don't understand, is that it's 15 less students, but that for the name of their class may be higher than, it definitely will be, look at that.
So, my understanding also from the city leader meeting was that the development was delayed this fall because of the judge ruling about White Bear, and he anticipates that that will go through yet this winter, and he assumes that the development's going to start early, that's what he told us at the December meeting, is that those eight houses, he thinks that those houses will be built quickly, once they get the permit, because they couldn't permit until they could lay the pavement and do the utilities, that those were the most active, the last city he did see.
So, so that's one development, the apartments are going up, is that done, and we don't have any...
They're one and two bedroom, and I think it's 29 units.
Okay.
And I don't know their occupancy, but they're, but the one bedrooms are probably not going to have children, the two bedrooms are making it.
I think he said 36, one two-bedroom apartments, that's what Judge said. And then, the development behind your house, that's nine houses, and do you have any other market data on housing from real estate agents or anyone?
No, I didn't even know all the nine houses, I didn't do it.
And the homes that they're building in Hugo, he said $750,000, four and five bedrooms. They're inexpensive in White Bear, and the ones in Montmielai are built by a more expensive developer that is minimum 750, 400 to 550, and the other are 700.
So, not huge large families, but large houses, but not large families.
Hard to say, yeah, but looking at the families, it's just...
So, I kind of started off the conversation by saying, given our forecast, I think it's critically important that we are at or above, slightly above, difficult to quantify, our enrollment next year compared to where we are now. Does most of the committee agree with that?
I like the concept that you present, knowing there's all these other things that we have in control, about just taking, is it in this group of people who've got to build the budget on 3,260?
Well, I thought we built the budget on 3,240.
So, we're talking in the right direction, which is great, and I'm glad you asked that, you're both right, we're building a budget on 3,240, and our anticipated enrollment, based on this scenario, if all of them accepted and attended, would be 3,260, which is a better situation than building a budget on 3,260, and having a couple of things happen, and then we're at 3,240, which is our, kind of our current situation that we dealt with the last couple of years. So, we're trending sort of in the right, right direction.
So, I have a quick question on the kindergarten numbers for 2019, that's, don't hold it 182, but we usually set it at 160, because we really only have eight sections, we just added the section for this year.
That was a very deliberate board decision to avoid the overcrowding later, because the way the move-ins happened, and so...
And Wildwood was built for nine sections.
Right, but the board made a decision to make it 160, remember, a couple of years ago, right?
Right, to try to push down, like, so that's the one area where we had control, to try to get OH and...
And it was working, and then this year, we had too many, and so, we did add that section. So, does this model assume the nine sections still?
And it's only assume nine sections for kindergarten, and then, that's harmed a little lots, because once you go to second through fifth, we're back to eight sections, where that's, we've just moved to that direction, and we're also, which is partly the philosophy we're training people with.
So, we're kind of trending in the direction of potential options and scenarios to address that budget deficit, which we're going to get into the nitty-gritty out of the January 25th meeting. And we set that up so that we could have a conversation at the board meeting tonight, have building staff meetings tomorrow, and allow staff to have a time to discuss with their principals, some ideas and options and scenarios that they may have, but we're going to get into the nitty-gritty of sections per grade, average class sizes, things of that nature on the 25th. So, I'm not trying to kick the car down the road, I just, you talked about kindergarten and being nine sections or eight sections, that's included, some of that's included in some of our options and scenarios that we're going to talk about.
So, the only thing I would then want to know is, if there's a thought that we shouldn't keep nine sections with kindergarten, then what's the plan for, as those grades move on to the next grade? Because we've just turned the corner where we had nine sections at OH, and we've now gotten it back down to eight, because that building is really set for eight sections, so that would need to be part of that bigger portion, conversation.
Yeah, and I was just saying, how it would was built like that, we need to try to keep kindergarten sections smaller too, so typically, then you... So typically then you may have some room for move-ins or whatever for first grade in order to just keep it at eight sections. But, you know, we have to look at the number of rooms.
So when you say Wildwood was built for nine sections, that's for each grade?
No, that was just for kindergarten when they built it like that. But I mean, there would be space, there is space because, I mean, they did that. But it wasn't necessarily built.
So it was built nine sections for kindergarten and eight sections for first and eight sections for second?
Because they knew that, because we keep the kindergarten class sizes smaller.
Oh, okay.
And and then since we had nine, it still can move just eight if you.
Yeah.
With the same number of students.
So I agree with Julie. I like the concept of building on 3240, hoping that we get 3260. I'm not sure, I mean, I did not agree about the model of how we get to those numbers. I don't think we've explored move-in, move-outs, the concept of these new residences and things like that. So I can say I agree with the concept in thinking about capacity, budget, all those kinds of things about those numbers, how we get to those numbers because of the conversation we just had around kindergarten philosophy. And I have other pieces about the middle school getting too big and that being a very important moment of time for kids. I have some other questions too that we don't need to go into now. But for your conversation tonight, I, as a stable board member, I would agree with stable numbers at least, maybe a little higher for next year because of the budget situation.
And just figure out a way, or just at least analyze and quantify move-ins and move-outs, at least have those conversations.
Have those conversations. And the board has to deal with the 160 number of kindergarten. We need more information on those things, I think, before we come up with the exact process to get to those things. I think before in the past, we've gone ahead and done some things at high school for the admits, you know, but it's the elementary we have a little more problem predicting. But yeah, so I think the decisions on open enrollment, I'm not willing to to look at those yet in that detail. But philosophically, what you're presenting, I agree with the bottom line numbers. Julie, I I agree quite personally too.
Yeah. When we talk tonight, I'll just reference the conversation that we had here in committee. Talk about the timeline a little bit. Because we do know from looking at past history, and it just conceptually makes sense that our acceptance and attending rate is higher if we are able to give notice on, let's say, February 1st rather than August 1st. And so as much as we can try and quantify some of this stuff and get a lot of the guns that we can. Yeah, come up with a, as hard a number as enrollment can be early on, that can help with a budget forecast. So that does help with the study.
And we typically don't accept the kindergarteners in Tawak. We've had kindergarten rounded up to see what those were for sure.
And in fact, even later than that, because then the Natter, someone from Wildwood has all the calling of the people who haven't, who were on the original list but didn't show up or whatever. The kindergarten takes us a lot longer.
It does always take longer.
And that could really be a wild card. You look at last year, we had 153 resident kindergarteners. This year we had 167.
So and that's where, you know, we talked about the philosophy of this committee. It was how do we tap in to the Realtor groups to get a, to get a handle on what's going on in our market? So if there was some kind of a census sheet that we could have Realtors help us with, so we would have a better idea of the ages of the kids that were moving into the district.
I think for data on housing market trends and predictions for next year would be helpful. I mean, they kind of know more than we do about that.
Yes.
And we've got a lot of Realtors in housing. Julie Dixby is one who is very active. With Martin Cole's kids. And we're asking.
Well, you have his kids still calling.
Oh, she was concerned?
Yeah. This is still.
He doesn't know. But then the other one, Paul. You know, so we've got.
I got that Julie.
Julie Dixby. And we're asking, it would be two very good people. I talked to Marty a lot. I first came on board trying to understand housing and open enrollment. He was very helpful.
And I I did just, I mentioned I reached out to him to see if he would have an interest in being on the finance committee, but maybe this be, this committee would be better.
Better than?
If he's got that perspective, then he could share.
We'll take that.
Regarding our January 25th, we need, do we need to talk about that? Do we need to talk about that in house market terms if we're going to do that?
There's a couple of things also is that last year in the 2017, 18 school year, we had 18, 21, 22 students at the high school turn us down open enrollment and 15 at the middle school. And part of the thinking on that is that there's a, it's somewhat a common application to what students do when they're applying to colleges. They'll apply a whole bunch, whichever ones they get in at, that's what they'll do. The other thing is that we waited pretty long last year to let people know. And so if they if they know in January that they're coming here, then they make the plans accordingly. And if they don't, then if they keep on waiting, it becomes harder to get here. So that's one of the things that we need to be thinking about. As I said, 15 in the middle school and 20, 22 at the high school.
Didn't have.
Didn't have, no. We're accepting the good.
So last year, we accepted them earlier and had them come in to have a look because we thought we did it later the year before, right? Like, we wanted to get them into the schools so they could see what their kids, what it looked like.
Right, we wanted that, but it didn't happen in all cases. Because we still didn't make decisions until later on. We didn't do it in the first window in January. You know, a lot of times we lay on further on.
Because I thought we did it a lot earlier last year because we.
We wanted to do it last, but we still didn't make some decisions until farther on.
And I think, oh, sorry. I just, I think that's part of what we want this committee to kind of set a philosophy around as far as timing of those windows. I don't know when we'll be deciding that, but should be in the first three years.
And then you have to be aware of our number, our increase of residents in compared to residents out will converge five, summer of 15 to almost 50, summer of 16. I don't have summer of 17 numbers. Based on the enrollment sheets, market insurance, historically, that number of move-ins is growing.
It grew really, really a lot last year in kindergarten. Now is the big, the big one.
Right, but I know, I'm looking at previous two years because I don't have last year's numbers compared to our enrollment spreadsheet last year. But based on the enrollment spreads from previous two years, 2015 was 35, positive increase over the summer of move-ins compared to move-outs. And then summer of 16 was 51. So you're seeing a trend moving that way where people, because we've been rejecting students, people are rising, they have to buy to have an assured spot in the district. And so those numbers are increasing on us too, which is the strength of having, you know, some real estate data. Because if we have another 50 that we're going to gain by move-ins or more, if that pattern continues or even stays level, that impacts what we can accept for open enrollment. And that's where you've always been stuck.
One thing that I want to make sure we're conscious of is when we start to look at options and scenarios to address next year's budget is the opposite of that, right? If part of our way of balancing the budget for next year is to make program reductions, which it certainly will be, will we have some students leave us because of the program that they are emotionally attached to this year is no longer here? An unfortunate reality. So I think you bring up a good point there. Another one is making sure that we account for that even though it's tough to quantify. Because we know that 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 will come.
And if you add too many kids to the district, you change the district experience and people won't want to come here.
Absolutely.
I mean, so no matter what change happens, it affects them positively or negatively. None of which we can quantify.
Yeah.
We love this word.
I I have the direction I believe that I need unless somebody else has a comment or would like me to say something or feel free to give a summary at the meeting tonight too. But essentially, I'll just talk about the conversation that we had here tonight. Talk about the timeline in terms of the open enrollment application deadline. And then, you know, certainly, I don't want to speak out of turn, but it it seems like it's the unanimous feeling of the committee that it will be important for us to have at or slightly over the student count next year that we have this year, given our budget constraints. Is that a fair thing to say to me?
One of the difficulties that we have in doing this is that we're going to age out, I can remember exactly, about 280 some students. And we brought in this last year, 180 kindergarteners. So I mean, we have to make up another 100 somewhere through there. Last year, we made 150, or excuse me, we made in that attrition of 51 students moved in. And that may be even more this year, but it's still difficult to say. So I think the Realtors may give us some insight, but I'm I'm not certain that they, they're, they're never going to rock solid.
Right.
You know, and so we have, I think we have to be a little bit careful with that. But the other thing is that the budget piece that we spent a lot of time on is going to be an important piece with enrollment and be hearing more about it time when we look at the preliminary budget for 2018. And so if we have 186 open enrollment applications, 79 of which are in kindergarten and first grade, which we do nothing with, then you'll see that if we move and accept all these ones and they all attend, that we'll build it up in terms of our enrollment by 12 students than than what we had before. And so which is pretty close to where we're at.
Yeah, it it will be important. These are open enrollment applications as of January 3rd. You know, they'll all are gathered. And obviously, we're, they're going to have a few more here for the 15th. But given the, it's not 100% attendance rate, even if you let them, even if you accept the open enrollment students in the first window, it will be important for us to accept and for a large majority of the students in grades two through 12 that are on this list to attend if we want to make our budget bigger for next year. Taking maybe consideration, we need to look at the housing trends and stuff like that, which I agree would be easy to do. Yeah, I just, I don't.